So I'd like to call the order, this meeting of the Select Board for October 28th, and thank everyone for coming. Going through our agenda, as usual, we will start with announcements and the agenda review, followed by a public comment period. We then have the Town Manager's report. On there potentially is discussion of our agenda schedule, potential discussion to consider a request from the Town Manager regarding RFP for Town Council Services. We will get a fiscal 2020 first quarter financial review and update. We will review and update the Select Board and Town Manager's goals and objectives, and review the Town Manager's fiscal '21 budget preparation instructions. We will also consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for the Council on Aging for the new Center dedication ceremony to be held on Saturday, November 2nd, from 1:00 to 4:00. Following our regular meeting around 7:15 or so, the Board will interview and select candidates to serve on the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. I have a conflict, as my husband is interested in being appointed to that committee, so I'm hoping to run through kind of the remainder of our business, and then I will recuse myself and depart, leaving the rest of you to take on that important task. We then have other business, some ongoing issues, potential updates, any liaison reports, and three sets of minutes. Then moving back up to announcements, I just want to thank everyone for attending Town Meeting last week, and more importantly, for getting through the business in a speedy manner. It was a great event. And then let everyone know that on November 16th, the Building Committee for Florence Road will be inviting the public to a public input session in the morning at the Center. So more information will be coming, but that is pending. Did anyone else have announcements?
So we have the opening of the Senior Center, as you pointed out, 1 o'clock this coming Saturday afternoon. So anybody who wants to see the new Center, please come on down and check out where your taxpayer dollars went to benefit the community.
Any other announcements? All right, public comment? Yeah, Becky?
So, in the aftermath of the tragic death of Mary Fairburn a week-plus ago, allegedly by her husband, I have had a conversation with a number of people about what we as a town could do, what if anything, we as a town could do to increase support, or raise awareness, or provide resources in the area of domestic violence. And I've actually heard of some fairly interesting suggestions. So I would like to ask that we put that on a future agenda, to discuss that, see if there are some steps that we as a town could take.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right. And Mark, when you are ready?
Item number two, as you recall, the Board voted to direct me to issue a request proposal for Town Council Services this week, actually. Since that time, Town Council and I have met several times to improve the relationship and streamline the process of access to Council. I have to tell you, it's gone very, very well. One of the best things that we've done, and it came to fruition today, was having monthly Town Council hours here at Town Hall. Town Council comes out the day, the last Monday of the month, spends time answering questions. There were several department heads, including myself, that went to Town Council to follow up on some questions and get advice from him, and it worked really, really well. We've also improved the way we access Council in terms of tracking requests to Council and feedback to the town, and staying on top of those matters. So I'm very happy with the way, the relationship with Town Council, and Labor Council for that matter. We had an issue last week that we needed Labor Council's assistance, and he was excellent as well. So I'd like to leave things as-is until next spring, and then as part of your reappointment process, determine whether or not we need to issue an RFP or stay the way we are then, you know, get another six months under our belt. But I don't think we need to go out to RFP right now. I'd like to stay the way we are, and I'd ask the Board to reverse that decision. So that is my recommendation to the Board this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Paul, the last Monday of the month, Paul comes out, holds Town Council hours here in Town Hall, and then stays for the meeting. This is about the second time we've done it. There was a holiday the last Monday in September, so...
Very good. Thoughts, discussion, comments?
My only comment would be, the only time that I recollect ever issuing an RFP was when we have been unhappy with Town Council. And in light of the fact that, I believe that Mark has indicated his happiness, and this Board is happy, I don't think we're compelled necessarily next spring to do a new RFP unless we want to change the way we're handling Council.
I agree with you.
So with that said, I don't think it needs to come back unless a Board member wants to have it discussed as an agenda item, and then we could seek RFP if a majority of the Board felt that way.
Okay. Becky, you had your hand up?
Yeah, my thought is essentially the same. I think we certainly have no reason, I think we've had some very helpful information, good support, and I don't see any reason to automatically issue an RFP. Certainly not now, and even in the spring, maybe we should just check in and make sure that that's how we still feel.
I agree 100%.
The one part that might, I mean, you know, the split between two firms may, that is the only area where I would suspect we might want to make some changes at some point, but at this point, I'm fine.
John?
I just want to add that since things have smoothed down and are working much better together, it's also showing up in our finances, because we aren't spending as much as we did last year.
Not even close.
So that's another strong plus to stay right where we are.
Very good.
Easy, no?
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, so I have no, I see no need to issue an RFP at this point. I think it makes sense potentially to touch base again in the spring. I echo Becky's one concern that I can foresee situations where having two separate councils, although they have somewhat divided responsibilities, could get a little bit messy, but...
It's worked well so far.
So do we need to formally make a motion and a vote not to?
I want the Board to rescind your previous vote, because you gave me a directive, and I want...
I want the Board rescind its previous vote to seek an RFP for Town Council Services in the fall of 2019. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is it unanimous?
Thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you, Paul. So the next thing, the next thing on the agenda is the fiscal 2020 first quarter financial review, and I want to spend a couple of moments talking about areas of good news and areas of concern. The first thing I want to talk about is the local option meals room tax. You can see that we took in $59,548 in the first quarter. The Finance Committee and Select Board should have received an email from me when that information came out explaining how it works. They are a month behind the quarter, so the first quarter payment in FY '20 covers the month of June, July, and August, not July, August, and September, which we ordinarily would consider...
But why? Why is that?
That's just the way the DOR works. That's just the way, that's just the way the DOR works. So the first quarter meals tax, the first quarter meals tax was outstanding. It was an increase of about $13,000 year-over-year, from fiscal year '19 to fiscal year '20. So that's very, very good news, which means the new restaurants that have come to town are doing good business, and they're generating great revenue for the town of Groton, so congratulations to them. Where I'm a little bit concerned is on the room tax. Now, again, it's only for July and August, not September, but the intake was $6,200. You translate that out, now the summer is their busy time, you translate that out over the course of 12 months, that's $37,000 annually at the 3%. We were counting on $50,000. So it's down from what our initial anticipated revenue was going to be. And when I did the budget estimates for FY '21, I doubled that number to a higher number. I was counting on $100,000. So I'm going to have to sit down with the Finance Team and dial that back a little bit. The meals tax is right on what we anticipated. We were estimating about $200,000. So that's good news. The meals tax is outstanding, and we want to open more restaurants in Groton.
Yeah, well, just to that point, does anybody know how we could urge, encourage some restaurants to locate in the empty, unused parcels at the Shaw's Plaza?
We are working with the owners of Shaw's. We constantly reach out to them to offer our assistance. They're supposed to do the sewer hookup in the next six to eight months. They hired a new real estate agent to market that property, so I'm hoping it takes off. I mean, we can do everything we can, but we are in constant contact with them.
I hear a lot of good ideas of restaurants that I think should be...
Becky, you and I should sit down and talk. But I got to tell you, you know, the added restaurant, the one that they brought in and the one here, the old fire station, have obviously been doing very, very well, and our meals taxes are increasing, so I'm very, very pleased with that.
Mark, before you move on from that?
Yep.
In the future, could we break that line down so it's meals and room are separate?
Yes. Patricia, is that something we can do, separate out the two?
Yeah, that's how it shows up on the budget, Alice.
Yeah.
Yep. An area of concern, another area of concern that I'm quite troubled with is the licenses and permit line. You can see we're at $90,000. Last year at this time, we were at $96,000, so the summer months have slowed down in terms of construction. And what's really, really troubling is, I want to see what the second quarter financial show, because in the second quarter last year, we got a big permit on an HVAC, HVAC system, which generated about $80,000 worth of income, which helped us throughout the year. That's probably not going to happen this year, so I want to keep an eye on that license and permit line. It's a little troubling right now. We'll update it, and we'll look at it as Patricia gets into revenues for October and November, when we start doing our budget for FY '21. But I definitely wanted to point that out to you, that is an area that I'm a little bit concerned about, and I wanted to call it to your attention tonight, so that you can keep an eye on that as well. Investment income continues to be really good, so, you know, the way our treasurer's investing the money is working really, really well. You'll also see on the real estate taxes, that continues to be strong. Our people are paying their taxes on time, and so that's outstanding as well. Motor vehicle excise is level year-over-year. You like to see that being a little bit of an increase, because that means people are buying new cars. The number has leveled off, but I'm not overly concerned about that. We're going to have to keep an eye on that and keep monitoring that. Overall, we're right where we were last year in terms, we were 23.14% on total revenues last year, we're 23.13% this year. So we're right in line, but I wanted to point out a couple of areas of concern, which we will really look at when we do the second quarter financial review. I also want to point out to you, general government this year, you'll see it's at 28.23%, and last year at this time, it was 26.61%. Biggest reason for that, none of our union contracts were signed until Town Meeting, and we paid a lot of retro pay in the second quarter. So obviously, the salaries are here now, so that's why you see a little bit of bigger expenditure now. That will also level out after the second quarter. So those numbers, I'm quite pleased with, and everything else seems to be pretty much in line with last year at this time. So overall, we're on target this fiscal year. First quarter was good. There are those couple of areas that I wanted to call to your attention, so that you're aware of them. And when we do the second quarter review in January or February, whenever we end up doing that review, we'll have those numbers, and we'll do a more deeper dive into those numbers as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Patricia's here as well.
So...
Please.
The employee benefits and other line that says we've already spent 65% of it?
Yeah, that's because we pay our pension upfront. We pay that big $1.6 million pension in July.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, thank you. When we do our financial review, we also do a goal update, and I'll let you know that I am very pleased with the way we've been handling the goals this year. I think we're in great shape. Select Board functioning continues to go well. I think the Board is operating in high capacity. We'll continue to send out future agendas, and I think the Board has been very good about getting the items. Allison and I, the Chair and I, talk weekly setting up those agendas. We talk about future agendas going out. I sent you out the future schedule. I think one of you called today asking for that schedule, as a matter of fact. So we'll continue to stay on top of that, so I'm pleased with that. As far as the Capital MICA Committee that you guys have formed, based on the feedback from the FinCon, you changed it to the Charge of the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. You're going to be making those appointments tonight. You adopted the charge, so I would say that goal will be completed tonight. Item number three, goal number three, which is the Green Communities designation, the energy audit, the vehicle policy adoption has been completed. Town Council has done their review, and I received a sign-off from Town Council on the application today, which we, I guess it's a requirement, Paul. The Town Council reviews that and signs off on it, which he did. So we will be filing our application in the next couple of weeks. We'll give you the, we'll give you the final application for you to look at before we send it in, but we should be hopefully hearing, you know, we should get that application in, and we should get that approved, so I'm very happy.
Yeah, so what exactly is their deadline for the application?
November 20-something. They pushed it back twice.
Yeah, right.
But we're ready to go.
And when do they announce?
I think January.
And so then, soon after that, assuming that they accept us, which there's no reason they wouldn't...
We're going to start filing for grants.
Yeah, but we ought, we get that, the first grant, pretty soon, but we know already what, how...
This Board, we got to, this Board and the School Committee has to talk about where we want to apply that money, because this is joint with the school district.
Right.
So we're going to have to talk to the schools and figure out how we want to do that. I'd suggest we set up a little task force or subcommittee.
So in the application, it doesn't actually spell out the first things that we will buy with their money?
No.
Okay?
Correct.
So we will have to make those decisions? Because my recollection is that the towns that have benefited the most from this program have really been on top of submitting, you know, after you spend that first grant, you can submit more.
Yes.
And so they've had the kind of lineup of stuff to go.
And we need to do that.
Right.
The biggest thing, though, is getting that application in and getting going, so...
Right, right. So we'll see that before...
Yeah, I got to tell you, Karen Chapman from the MRPC has been outstanding working with us. So we'll continue to work on that.
Within this application, Mark, has a determin, already been made, determination already been made as to when kind of their window starts in terms of the energy efficiency changes, or is that still something that once we're in the program?
I think once we're in the program, we set it, you know, Allison, let me go back and look at the application. I don't want to give you a wrong answer now, it's a good question, I will get that answer for you. The next goal was determine the appropriate and affordable levels of public safety. There's no new update from the last time. I think we pretty much completed that in the, over the summer. The Board conducted what they needed to do, and we took care of that. I will let you know, though, that the first class of the call firefighters has been going very, very well. The chief has been participating, and the troops have been training, and nobody's dropped out, so that's a positive sign, so that's continuing to go very, very well. Item number five, all the Selecting Board policies. The Board had a workshop on October 17th, which I would say was highly successful. We have another one scheduled for November 7th. Town Council should get me some information on the policies that you asked for. Josh, I sent you some information. You and I need to talk about that email that I forwarded to you. We can do that in the next couple of days, on the safety policy, loss control policy. And then Town Council gave us two dates that they're available, Town Council's available to come out and go over the standard of conduct policy with the Board. I have not heard back from all of you, but it'll be either the 25th or the 8th of November. And we're going to start at 6 o'clock with Town Council, and then go to the regular meeting at 7:00. So I had sent you an email asking, and I think everybody came back and said you're fine with, the people I've heard from are fine with either one of those two dates. I think there was a preference, one of you had a preference for the 8th?
You don't mean the 8th of November.
No, December, I'm sorry, Josh. November 25th or December 8th, thank you for correcting me. So it'll be one of those two meetings, and once I hear back from all of you, I'll set that and send you out, so you can plan on 6 o'clock that night. But I'd say this goal is just about close to being completed. The budget, we're working on it. You gave me my guidance for FY '21. I spoke to the school superintendent last week, and what we're going to do, the school superintendent and I are going to get together with the Dunceville Town Administrator in the next couple of weeks to map out the FY '21 process in more detail. So the lines of communication with the school district is wide open, and we're moving forward with that. So we will work and meet the budget guidance that the Select Board gave me, and the Finance Committee, rather. I have no update on this one. Becky, is there anything?
Yeah, well, I wish I could say that, you know, here's some real progress. In my work on the Affordable Housing Trust, we certainly have had a number of discussions in the Planning Board, the Housing Production Plan just happening. I think that there's, there's good work happening. I guess the, but there isn't anything that has actually been accomplished, and we're still working on it. The one thing I would just say, because I think it's worth getting this word out there publicly, is that I learned at the Planning Board meeting that that very large development in Lincoln, where Route 2 makes the right-hand turn, that is a senior community, a senior retirement, continuing care community. And because of that, Lincoln has now met all of their affordable housing targets, because it's all rentals. I have been saying for years that I wish that someone would build, not that size, a smaller version of that in Groton, because I think there is a market for a senior community with various, all of the levels of care that might be needed, where you move in and you can stay there. And if they are rentals, then it meets our quota for affordable housing by the various state guidelines. So I don't know what it takes to get a builder of those things to come to Groton, but I'd like to put the word out there publicly. Obviously, it takes a relatively large parcel of land, but we have some of those on the market, and periodically, some come on the market, so just want to say that.
Anything else on that goal?
No, unfortunately.
Okay. And then the final goal, improve effectiveness on data management and IT. Town Meeting appropriated the funds necessary to purchase the software as recommended. Patricia and Mike are actively working on that now, and it should be up and running. I know Patricia's putting together an implementation plan. We have our department head meeting next Tuesday. I know Patricia's going to talk about how she'd like to roll out the new software and how we're going to do it, so she'll be talking to the department heads then. So I would say, of our eight goals, seven are well on their way or have been completed. And I'm very pleased with the work that we've done, and I want to thank the Board, I want to thank our department heads who work with us, and I think we're in great shape overall. So, back to, I'm sorry...
Before we go on, so when we set these, these were anticipated to be goals for 12 months, correct?
Yep.
And we've now, they were aligned with evaluation, correct?
Correct.
So now we're kind of tweaking that? Do we, are we going to end up with these being the goals for an 18-month period, and if so, what do we want to add?
I think at our next workshop meeting, we could have that as part of the discussion. Because typically, when we do our goal-setting, initially, it's part of a workshop, and then we bring it in front of the public for comment during a regularly scheduled agenda. So I think you bring up a very good point, and in so much as the new alignment of the goals has to coincide, I think, with the review process, and we extended that out for, what, 18 months? Is that correct?
Correct.
That we should discuss what we want to do with the goals to align that. I think it's a really good point.
Okay.
Can we add that to the November 7th workshop?
Well...
That's going to be a long night.
I don't think that's going to, there's enough time. I think we might have to do another one.
Does that need to be a workshop as opposed to a regular meeting, or is there...
You could start at 6 o'clock, one night before our regular meeting, and maybe do it. A lot of that's brainstorming, and it's just ideas that each individual Board member has that has to coalesce into agreement of a majority of us to adopt it. So it could be time-consuming and cumbersome to have during a regular agenda.
Okay. John?
It's conceivable that, given that we need to think about the period from January 1st to June 30th, that we could, if we get started on it reasonably soon, we could come up with some goals that could be done in six months and work on those, and that will bring us right in to sync with the evaluation dates now.
So may I make a suggestion? I had said that we would meet on either the 25th or the 8th at 6:00. Most of you told me that either one of those dates are fine. Why don't we do goals on the 25th at 6:00, and Town Council on the 8th at 6:00 on the standard of conduct policy? Want to do that? Do you mind starting two meetings early?
No, that sounds good.
That's fine.
Allison?
Yeah, go ahead, Becky.
So I just want to also, this, this agenda item referred to the Town Manager's goals. And coincidentally, several of us attended a training session last week on performance evaluations. And the, two of the things that were emphasized is that you should have clear goals, and you should give frequent feedback, not just at the time of the annual review. So I went back to look and see what were the Town Manager's goals for this year, and there were five goals that he had proposed, or I guess he and the Chair had proposed together. And of those five, three of them, I would say, have been met at this point. One was to oversee the Senior Center construction. One was to develop a succession plan for the building inspector, which became moot when the building inspector did not retire. And one was budget planning for FY 2021, which we are well into. And then, as you had mentioned in the contract, we agreed to realign Mark's evaluation with the fiscal year rather than with the calendar year, so we have an extra six months. So I was going to suggest that we should also consider, have a conversation with Mark about adding some goals to his list. But then, the other thing that I discovered was that we actually never approved those five goals. There had been some discussion that they were not robust enough. I think in the minutes, Josh, you particularly had said they didn't, they were just like doing his regular job. And then they never came back for approval, so we definitely should touch on them again.
Well, I think at one, if I may, I think at one point during the discussion, one of my biggest goals is to help the Selecting achieve their goals.
Yes.
And so I think we talked a lot about your goals and my goals aligning and being the same goals. Why have separate goals for the Town Manager and the Board, because we're all working together to achieve those? And your goals probably don't happen unless I help move them along, right?
Right. But at the same way that we're talking about adding some for ourselves, I think it'd be appropriate...
I was assuming whatever you add for yourself, mine too. That's, I guess, the point of what I'm saying.
And so I just think in that discussion, we should also include whether we, there are specific goals for Mark that we would like to...
We'll put that on the agenda for November 20.
The list, you said there were five. Do you have the list of all five?
Oh, yeah, the other two. So the other two, one was to review the town-owned property. It, two, what says, this again, it was not approved, but it says, "Review all town properties under the jurisdiction of the Select Board and Town Manager to determine if any community needs, including housing and other related uses, can be addressed." So in part, I assume that once we have the Capital Planning Committee in place, that some of that goal is going to start happening. And the last one was to help improve functionality and communication with the Select Board.
I think that's been completed.
Okay, so can we add that discussion on to the Board's goal?
I made a note, I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next item in my Town Manager's report, which is item number five, which is the Town Manager Budget Preparation Instructions. So what I did is, based on what the Board and the Finance Committee gave me last week, I drafted the memo, and doing the budget kickoff next Tuesday morning, we're having our department head meeting, which we kick off the budget with the staff, and then I sent it out to all the Boards and Committees. So I've given you the six, or the five, things that I believe the Board directed in terms of instructions and guidance. So I would ask the Select Board to let me know if that memo meets what you gave me for instructions. memo meets what you gave me for instructions. I think it does. I ran it by both Patricia and Dawn to make sure I didn't miss anything, and they both feel that it did. So before I send it out, I just want to make sure you guys are all happy.
Thoughts and comments, folks?
It sounded fine to me.
Is it possible, Mark, and I don't know what the boards had decided, kind of, to add on, like fiscal '17 expended, so that we have three years of actuals?
If you would like that, we can, I think we can do that, right? Yeah, we can do that.
Correct.
Type's getting small, but we...
It gets very small. Yeah. There's only so many, so many columns. But you want me to add FY '17 expended?
I would, but...
Okay. I have to rebuild all the sheets that I just built last week. That's okay.
What? You're sending the pin comment sometime?
Yeah, I wanted the board to sign off on it. I was going to send it out to you next week, but you want it before you end?
I would like to, yeah. In case someone wants to comment, I'll try and put it back.
All right. Allison, on the FY '17 expended, because I've already constructed all the spreadsheets for next year, and to go back and add FY '17 is going to be a ton of work for me in a short period of time. Is it all right if I just have it on the final overall budget and not on the individual departmental budgets? Is that okay?
Not with me, but...
I thought we had talked about adding this previously as well.
Several years, yeah.
I don't recall. I honestly, I'm not trying to fight that, but I don't recall.
How much work's that going to be for you to do?
By next Tuesday's going to be a lot, but if that's what the board wants, that's what I'll do.
What is the "by next Tuesday" piece of it?
That's when I give out the budget packages to everybody, and that has to be on what I give out.
Okay. Did folks have any questions or concerns about the A, B, C, D of the, is page two? So do you need us to take a vote and make a motion, or just kind of consensus that...
Nope, I'm fine.
All right.
And then finally, on my town manager's report, this, don't yell at the council on aging. Don't yell at anybody, because I know you want to have more than 30 days or whatever it is for one-day liquor licenses. I attended the council on aging meeting last week, in which they were finalizing the plan to, for the dedication on Saturday. And I said, "Are you guys going to do a champagne toast or anything?" And they said, "Oh, we haven't thought about that, but that's a good idea. We should do that." So they said, "Can we do that?" So we checked with our insurance policy. We checked with the A, B, C, C. You guys can grant a one-day liquor license for a champagne toast. And you could also, they don't need special insurance. It's covered under our town's insurance policy. So we thought this would be a good thing, welcoming the new center to have a champagne toast at the event. And so I asked, I'm asking the board to approve that this evening. This is coming from really me, not the council on aging. So it just came up last Tuesday, that's why, or Wednesday, whenever we can have it. Wednesday.
So does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion, but before that, I just want to say, as it is always good practice to make sure that there is an equivalent non-alcoholic beverage easily, freely available without stigma, because that's always good practice, and especially for the town.
That's an excellent suggestion. I will talk to Kathy about that. We can have a couple of...
Sparkling grape juice.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I move that we approve a one-day liquor license, beer and wine license for a champagne toast for the council on aging, for the new center dedication ceremony to be held on Saturday, November 2nd, 2019, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Mark, the next item on the agenda is the Capital Planning Advisory Committee. Before I depart selfishly, are there any ongoing issues that need to be updates?
Yeah, let me give you a couple of quick, very quick updates. Some of them I've already covered. The senior center building project I'm taking off, because that's done. So I'm taking that off. The Prescott School sprinkler system project, the...
We will, and the senior center get final financial stuff when that's...
Yep, when that's done. As I said to the board, when I told you that the certificate of occupancy was granted. With regards to the Prescott School sprinkler system, the Friends of...
One sec. Before you take it off the list, and I know there's some outstanding bills that still have to be paid, but I'd like you to give us a financial recap of the project before you take it off the list.
Oh, before I take it off the list, okay. And I won't take it off.
Thank you.
That is my plan. Once all the final bills are paid, Patricia and I will give you a full accounting of the money.
Appreciate it.
Yep. No, I think it's important. I said, I think I said in my email to you, I want to do that. I think it's important. Prescott School sprinkler system project, the Friends of Prescott filed another application with the CPA, if they want to go back out to bid in the spring, so, for that. So that's in process. So I was concerned, I think, John, you and I were talking about that the other day. They had filed an application. So if we do anything, it'll be in the spring for that.
Can you see the advisory committee having regular meetings, Prescott School Oversight Committee?
We haven't met since our first initial meeting. I think we're supposed to meet quarterly.
Yeah, we met like two months ago, two and a half months ago. We probably do for one around Thanksgiving.
Yep. Let's schedule that.
And I assume, Mark, on whether it's the sprinkler system or other projects, that Friends are the ones who are kind of driving the bus in terms of reaching out and getting quotes or contacting folks?
When we do the project, we have to advertise it as a town, because it's a town building. So we would put the bid out. But I am working with Bruce Easton on that.
No, I understand that we have to do that in terms of, like, we didn't, we didn't receive any bids or what have you.
Correct.
I assume if they wanted to kind of reach out to folks and figure out why, that that's...
We both are. I'm reaching out as well. I have a couple of calls out as well. I think, I want to know what I, why. And I know Bruce is reaching out to them too, so I think it's important that we all talk. You don't want me to, I won't. That's fine. Unless, unless for me, I got to do those FY '17 expended stuff, so I have enough to keep me busy over the next...
We don't want you getting into trouble.
Thank you. I don't want to get into trouble either. Water Department, I am in Guineas. I sent you out an update this afternoon from the Water Department on how they got the anticipated estimates. And I know there's some concern on that. I will follow up on that at another meeting with the board. But I just want to let you know that we are meeting with our financial advisors to determine the best way, if we are to go forward with the project, how to do it to minimize the impact on the ratepayers and the taxpayers, if that's what the board and the Water Commission decides. So we have a good plan in place. We got some preliminary numbers from our financial advisor today, and we're going to continue to oversee that and work on that.
We still need to schedule, I think, the continued executive session that got truncated.
Right. I was going to say, we were way too rushed, and we need to have them, we need to meet with them again. And also, I mean, they mentioned it, but I keep seeing now information about the PFAS issue and...
They started testing today. So they, hopefully, will get those results back in next week or so.
Is, is the testing more involved than simply taking one, a water sample, putting it in a sterilized container?
Yep, from all, from all, there are three different locations that they're taking the water. It goes off. They have to make sure it's not contaminated. And then they get the results back.
Okay. So it's maybe half a day's work to...
I think so, yeah. Yep. We should get the results back, as soon as we get the results back. Everybody's dying to see those. They're important. With regard to the MS4 permit, now the town meeting is appropriated to the funds, John and I had a conversation on Thursday last week about how we're going to go about figuring out a funding plan for this. And we thought community input would be very, very important, and I agreed with him 100%. We talked about a working group. But then, I talked to Tom Delaney about that, and Tom had a great suggestion. We have a stormwater committee, that this is their responsibility. So I'm going to work with the stormwater committee and the engineer as our public arm to hold hearings and things like that, to ultimately bring back a recommendation to the Select Board. I think they're the right people to do it. They have the knowledge, a good diverse group made up of various boards and committees. So that's how we're going to go about doing that. I thought that was a great suggestion, John, and that's how we're going to go about getting public input and doing that.
But I'm not sure. Okay, leave it.
Well, that kind of leads into the question I had. So we're, we agreed to hire consultants, and my question was, who are they consulting to?
The stormwater committee. They're going to work with me, Tom Delaney, and the stormwater committee to come up with a plan to bring back to the Select Board and ultimately town meeting.
Okay, but some public hearings and public input?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah. This is, this is, I'm not going to make the same mistake surrounding community of ours, Nate, on this process. Learn from others' mistakes.
There's no, there's no way that anybody's come up with yet to get at doing what the MS4 requires without getting into taxpayers' pockets.
I agree with that 100%.
Do we have an understanding or a list now, or when will we have such that kind of outlines what, what the things are that we need to accomplish?
That's, that's part of this whole process.
Are?
No, that's part of this whole process. That's what we're going to have the engineer help us determine. Because there are, there are a lot of moving parts with this.
I thought the engineer was to help us determine the best way to pay for it.
And help us determine exactly what some of the costs are. Can't determine what you're going to pay for unless you know what the costs are, so...
You can't do that until you've figured out what you want to do.
Exactly. So I think it's hand in hand.
Okay.
Great point, though, Allison. Any other questions on that? No update on poly styrene?
Yeah, actually, I do. Please. Since the state's so good at writing guidelines and forcing communities to do things such as this MS4 permit, and I'm not fundamentally, for everybody at home who doesn't know, the state is requiring communities around the entire Commonwealth to do better stormwater management practices. And, you know, they tell us we have to do it, and we have to formulate it and everything. Of course, they don't give us any money. So as a result, we have to meet their regulations, their guidelines, at a cost of a taxpayer. And that's what this money that was appropriated is for. That's what we have to work out. And I would love to have some innovative, creative idea that's not an impact fee in order to put this in place. So let us know the meeting schedule when you put that together too, especially the kickoff meeting. So we can go from there.
Our Public Works Director is out for a couple of weeks. When he comes back, we will put that in place and let you know.
Thank you.
On the MS4, not only is it a state mandate with no funding, it's also one of their favorite approaches of everyone has to do, meet the same standards. So there's no differentiation between Boston and Groton, or those kinds of things, just airing another pet peeve.
Poly styrene containers, no update. Green Communities, I already talked about.
Wait, excuse me. So poly styrene containers, what is the next step that...
Waiting for the Board of Health to submit a bylaw. To the hands of the Board of Health.
Wait, but the Board of Health said, yes, they support the concept, but I do not believe that they were going to create a bylaw.
I believe that was our request of them. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't...
I believe that we asked them to consider creating a bylaw. And we did that in writing.
I think I copied all of you on what I said.
Okay, so, well, my conversation with the Chair of the Board of Health, I guess I should go back to him. I, I'm not sure that he understood it, and I know I had forgotten that when I talked with him, so...
Maybe you should send the letter again, asking for an update.
Okay. Green Communities have already updated you on that. I'm going to be taking G off tonight, hopefully, in about five minutes. No update on charter approval. I've been working with the legislature. I've been working with Representative Harrington. I, I'm still working on it.
Is she going to come in? Have you sent her a letter?
I've spoken to her several times on this. I'm hoping that we get this thing approved in the next week or so, next couple of weeks.
That's not what I asked.
I know. I have not scheduled that yet.
Would you kindly schedule that, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Florence Roach Elementary School, Allison touched on this briefly tonight, but on November 16th at 8:00 at the center in West Groton, there will be a public forum from 8:00 to 11:00 to receive community feedback, first step of the process. There'll be several of those, I believe, Allison, that we talked about. But please mark your calendars for November 16th. That's a very important meeting. The architect and our OPM will be hosting the event to talk about the process moving forward. So that's very, very important. So please mark your calendars for that meeting. Library roof repaired, going well. Highway garage going well. So things are progressing nicely, on time, on budget. Lot of happiness on those two construction projects.
All right. Now I'm going to recuse myself and depart, and you guys can move on to the Capital Planning Advisory Committee.
So Josh, you are now Chair for this. We received, in your packet, I gave you a copy of the current charge. I believe Dawn sent out the revised charge to all of the applicants. Correct me if I'm wrong. So if you go to page...
14?
14 in your packet, you'll see a copy of the charge and a list of the people who applied. I'm going to ask if they're here tonight. Steven Lane, I see Steven is here. Dawn Koski, Dawn is here. Marlena, I see Marlena is here. I see Scott's here. Peter Stafford?
Wait, we don't all know who everybody is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steven Lane, please. That's Steven. Dawn Koski?
Yeah.
I think you know Marlena.
Right.
Scott Haggerty? Peter Stafford? Is William Swett here? No? Robert Lockett? David, I see David is here. Michael O'Rourke? So Mr. Lockett, Mr. Swett are not here. So you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 applicants. You have five positions. So what I thought I would recommend, Josh, to the board, is that we give each member an opportunity to come up to the table, introduce themselves to you, answer a question. And then, following the board's process, I've developed ballots for each member of the board for you to vote. We'll tally them up, and then you'll talk about who, and then the committee will be appointed at that point. So if it's okay with you, Josh, but since I just, I did this in the audit, it was put in the packet. I had no idea how Dawn put it in the packet, but that's what I did. So the first person is Steven. So Steve, if you want to come up to the table?
Before, before we get to that, I want to make sure that, you know, everybody who has applied to be on this committee understands that the charge was revised at the request of the Finance Committee and approved by this board. And I want to make sure everybody's read through it and they understand it. Yes? All right. So then, it would be a good time to move on. So, Mr. Delane, good evening.
Good evening.
So if you're... My turn to tell it.
The microphone is for the cable broadcast at home. That's why we want you to be at a microphone.
I usually can be heard.
Yeah.
So we received a copy of, I guess, an email that you sent in under our new committee interest form, and you stated what you're interested in joining, which is this committee. And we see that you have some previous experience, having served on a former rendition of the Capital Planning Committee. So do you want to tell us what you bring to the table to offer the town if you are appointed?
Sure. So for the past 47 years, I've worked as an entrepreneur. I've worked as a corporate turnaround specialist, as a consultant, and as a C-level corporate executive for rapidly growing companies. And I'm currently CEO of Massey Bioservices, a regional company that provides numerous services to the pharmaceutical industry. And I am well acquainted with the budgetary process, the capital planning process, have, back in the 1990s, was appointed by the then Selectman to the original Capital Planning Committee, chaired it for a number of years, and familiar with the process here in town, and would look forward to helping out again.
Before we go down to the board members, what do you see as the number-one thing that you should do as a member of this committee, meet that charge? What do you believe the overall intent is?
I think, think out of the box and really question the different members of the town who have capital projects about their thoughts and how they're arriving at their proposals, and really having them to think through, three to five years out, what's best for the town.
Fair enough. Let's go down to the board and start with John Geiger and see if he has any questions for you.
The work of the committee is going to take some time. And I want to make sure that you're comfortable and have the time available to put into the, to the effort.
I think I do, John. And, but at the same time, I would request that if I am chosen, that I be given the one-year...
that I be given the one-year lot slot, so that I can be sure. I, I always do everything all the way, so I will give you one year, and if it's something that I think I can handle going forward, I'd be happy to continue.
Let me ask, are the appointments are for?
No, the way the charge, if you read the charge, it's a three-year appointment, but your first appointment, you're gonna appoint two for three years, two for two years, one for one year. And I thought we would take that up after you get the five members on, on Board. Because the way we're gonna do the ballot, you're gonna appoint five members, then you can figure out who gets a three-year, two-year, or one-year seat. But I think Steven has given his preference.
Then the idea is that we would then be appointing?
Three years.
Someone who might decide to re-up, or somebody new?
For a three-year term.
In June, June 30.
Yeah. So it'd work the same way the Board, the Select Board?
Right, but, but the first, that one-year term, at this point, effectively gonna be a six or seven month term.
It's really only gonna be a half a year, that person.
Yeah, okay.
It's a half year.
Yeah.
We'll get through the first cycle. You all set, John?
Yep, thank you.
From John to John.
I just have a question regarding the buildings maintenance in town. You're familiar with all the buildings, I've seen you around, digging holes, et cetera. Your past experience with, is it in construction, building maintenance, or?
Well, as, as a senior C-level officer of a corporation, you know, you cover everything at some point. So facilities, the Director of Facilities currently points, reports to me, as does the COO. So I'm involved in all kinds of projects. Right now, the company I work for has got a $7 million project going on in the town of Pepperell, to renovate 84,000 square feet.
One of your own buildings, your company's building?
No.
No, no. You're contracting work, is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So I'm very familiar with all this kind of stuff. Becky?
Yes, so, um, one of the potentials on any committee, but on this committee, that might come up, would be some differing opinions, competing wishes. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit about how you might be prepared to handle conflict disagreement.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm a believer that we all have our own point of view, and that listening really deeply and closely to others who have a completely different point of view, is a worthwhile exercise. So I enjoy other points of view, and I try to listen so intently that I put myself in their shoes.
I don't have any questions for Steve. I've, I've worked with you on some private projects, volunteering here in the town, and I know you to be a pragmatic, open thinker, who likes to dot your i's and cross your t's, and you've shown me how you can think outside of the box, so I understand that. So thank you for your interest in serving on this committee, and let's continue on, please.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have is Don Kosky. Good evening.
Hi folks, I'm Don Kosky. I've lived here in Groton now for three and a half years. Moved here from Westford, where I lived for 38 years. Saw Westford go through a lot of growing changes, from about 8,000 people when we first moved in, to I think the population now is about 25,000. So lots and lots of change in Westford. I have a background in facility management, 30-plus years, 33 years in facility management. I retired in 2012, as the Senior Director of Facility Management for Philips Electronics Corporation, a big Dutch company, that had 240 locations in North America and South America, of which I was responsible for all 240 locations, from a facility management standpoint. Prior to that, I was the Director of Facility Management at Hewlett Packard and Agilent Technologies, before HP split its business and we became part of Agilent Technologies. I flipped my name tag over, stayed on the Andover campus, Agilent, then sold the facility, or sold the medical business to Philips, so I flipped my name tag over again and became part of Philips. Continuing to manage facilities at the Andover site, which was almost a million square feet, 3,000-plus employees. When I first went to work for Hewlett Packard in 1979, I went there as a facilities engineer and got continuing added responsibilities. There was one building on the campus, my boss and I basically built the campus, from one building, 300 employees, to seven buildings and 3,000 employees. And I had full, when I retired, I had full facility management responsibilities for, like I said, all 240 locations for Philips Electronics, in both North America and South America. And I basically retired because I got tired of traveling to far, far away places like Brazil, which was a long flight, and I did not want to die on an airplane, to be quite honest with you.
Fair enough. Again, before we go down to the Board, I'll ask the same question I asked, what do you think the number one job will be if you're appointed to this committee, based on the charge for you to do?
Since I've only lived here in Groton for three-plus years, I think it's extremely important for this team to find out everything that the town owns from a building standpoint. And that would be my first task, is to determine exactly what all the buildings, all the facilities are that we own, as a town.
Okay.
And I don't feel that I, I know that well enough, because I've only lived here for three-plus years.
I, I don't think you're alone in not knowing that list.
Okay.
And that's something that needs to be put together.
I guess let's start down with Becky this time, head the other way.
So, I guess I'll ask my same question, about handling differences of opinion or conflict.
So, handling differences of opinion is something that I've done for years and years and years. One of my tasks was to outsource facility management for HP, for Agilent, and then for Philips. So I dealt with CEOs, CFOs, right down the line of every business that Philips represented, that HP represented, and Agilent as well. And a lot of the CEO or C-suite people did not necessarily want to give up their control of facility management, so I had to convince the C-suite level that this was a smart thing to do, and it was not an easy task.
Okay, thank you.
John?
You, you had left your last job because of traveling, would you have a problem getting to West Groton?
No.
No. No, serious, a serious question regarding, have you ever volunteered, have you ever been on a town committee or any other public committees before?
I am currently a town employee, believe it or not. I work one day a week at the golf course, in the mornings. And have I volunteered? Yes, I have volunteered for the History Center, project in the back, Conservation Trust. I've been working with Ms. Pine's husband, Bob, on the Meadow Committee, and I've been doing a lot of mowing for the town. Let's see, the NRWA, I volunteer with the NRWA, and I do water sampling for them. Prior to getting into the facility management world, I was, my educational background is from W, I have a degree from WPI, in environmental/civil engineering. So the NRWA reeled me in, and I do water sampling on a monthly basis for them.
Thanks.
I gather from your statements that, that time is probably not a restricted thing for you.
Correct.
So I want to confirm my reading there. What do you think is the, the most important aspect of the role, of your role in the Capital Planning Advisory Committee?
I would have to say that I think learning more about the town of Groton. When we moved here, I can honestly tell you that my wife and I moved here for what's not in Groton, not what is here, or what is coming here. We wanted to get back to the small-town look and feel, and that's why we picked this community. In Westford, as I mentioned, they're growing by leaps and bounds. I actually served on the Capital Outlay Committee in Westford, working with the Westford Police Department. But they were well-established at that point. Both the Westford Police Department and the capital process was well in place. But again, I, I think the most important piece is to learn what we own, and then how to manage it, how best to manage it.
Thank you.
Don, I know you as well, and I think that you're a great asset to the community and do lots of great volunteer things.
Thank you.
Having had previous conversations with you and hearing your answers, I've got no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Marlena?
Well, most of you, I should say, I believe most of you know what I do for a living, but in the event that you don't, or the community does not know what I do for a living, I'm a small business owner. When I originally started running for the school committee, serving on the school committee three years ago, I had three companies, three small businesses. I originally took that, originally chose to want to run for a one-year term at that time, because it was just too much of a full commitment for that three-year term upfront, while running those three different companies, and being a mom and everything else. So I knew that I was in part of my planning, capital planning, business planning, I knew I was planning on selling that business, and within a year's time, which would then alleviate that time restraint, and then, that is why I chose that purpose. I tell you that story because I think that the Planning Advisory Committee has a lot to do with being very well-informed in regards to how to review different opportunities, different needs, and recommend when a time schedule could be, in regards to not so much specifically what the group of that project wants, but what the community wants. What I do for a living in regards to is commercial real estate, the two remaining companies I own. One is called DJM Properties, two apartment buildings, 18 units, own, managed by myself. I have some part-time employees that work for me, in regards to that. Orchestrating the, the coordination of 18 apartments, of when the water tanks need to be done, when the furnaces need to be done, plow, plowing contracts, you name it, from top to bottom, I manage it. I'm really well-versed in it. I, I love real estate, that's just basically a part of who I am. My other company is called Apartment Connection, it's a temporary housing company. Again, you have to plan when you take inventory, when you let go of inventory, care of the market, so that way that you're, you're constantly planning in regards to needs. And as a small business owner, much, there's always never enough cash flow, so you do always have to figure out and pick and choose what's the priority. And if you're not good at prioritizing the priorities, you've got a business for your student. So that's a high-level background on myself, and I've been in business by myself, or I should say, not by myself, for myself, for almost two decades now. So that's about me.
So, um, a couple of questions, and I'll start first. Same question I asked the other two candidates, was that what do you see as the number one priority that you need to do if you're appointed to this committee?
Well, I think, well, I think the Board already knows, and everyone in this room knows, we have to know what capital assets we have, so that list is essential, evaluating that list. But more so, the next step after that, that I personally feel is very important, is making sure that the recommendations or the advisory to the Select Board, working with the Town Manager, follow suit with the community values. I don't believe that you can make decisions and recommendations in an isolated, just because a project group is recommending that their project is really important, and this is why it's important. Is it important to the community? I think the community needs the guide, what assets they choose is valuable, what they want to be doing with them, and I think that you really do need to connect guidance that includes community values.
Okay. And the second question we have is, obviously you're a member of the school committee and a Chair of the school committee. You really have the time to do this? Sorry, John, you're gonna need another question.
I've got you.
Well, I am in a very unique situation, where I have always built my business in a very conservative manner. To do so in which I am happy to be able to share that I will be going down to one company in January, semi-retirement. Manage my companies in a manner that allows me to do so. And so I will be left with a good amount of free time. So to answer your question, yes, I absolutely have the time to do this. It's something that drives me, just capital planning, real estate, it's almost a hobby of mine, as odd as that sounds, but it is something that I'm very good at, and it's something that I think I could be an asset, in regards to the way I can uniquely look at different challenges that occur, and find solutions that don't necessarily always lead down to a dollar.
Fair enough. John, let's start with you first.
Familiar with your work on the school committee, too. How long have you owned those buildings that you manage?
2004 was the first building, took the capital from that building, reinvested four years later, bought another building. I, I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, that also DJM Property flips homes, so I will purchase homes. I, I like historical, well-charactered homes, I will buy them, fix them up, I do have vendors, and I manage those projects from time to time. And again, one of those six months.
That was gonna be my next question, if you had any construction experience with.
Yeah.
And briefly, what kind of philosophy would you have in like prioritizing building maintenance, building usefulness? You must do that on a regular basis, too, but without any... You must do that on a regular basis too, but without any specifics, generally speaking.
Generally speaking, well, first of all, with the community guiding, obviously. And when I say community guiding, at first, that will limit you to your inventory. If the community has no desire, and I'm just going to pick on Lost Lake Fire Station, if they have no absolute interest and they just find value and another use for it, well, then, you know, that would be something that would say, okay, well, we're not talking about maintenance for this building, we're talking about over-repurpose or, you know, some sort of recommendation like that. Once you have a strong focus of what your assets are, what the community values to maintain and keep these assets, you have to maintain them. That's a priority. If you don't maintain them, they become even more expensive because you end up playing catch-up. It's a perfect example, it's simply like the school system or any building in this town or even general government. If you're going to let it go downhill, it actually, you may be saving a dollar today because it's going to cost you two dollars. So, you're not going to save any money.
Thanks.
John Geiger.
Look, the interesting roles that you described that you've held seem to be heavily in the make a decision and go get it done. And this role is one that's really advisory. The ultimate decision will rest with this board and then the town meeting. How comfortable do you think you'll be and what are the steps you might take to get comfortable in an advisory role?
I've worked so long for myself, John, that I am dying for an advisory role. It's one of those things that, you know, you're making all the decisions and then you have to implement. Or you can make a recommendation to yourself and then you have to implement. It's really, would be refreshing for me to actually study something and look into it and give my opinion and have somebody else take it from there. Take it for what it's worth, but take it from there. And not so much mine, but the board's too. It's all about the board's decision, of course. But honestly, I've contemplated retirement, but I'll get bored. And if I get bored, I'll get in trouble. So, I always often thought, well, maybe I'll go work for someone else. And I will do my job and hand it off and I'll go on vacation when I go on vacation instead of always working on vacation. So, this is, this was my way of kind of giving back to the community, volunteering is something I love, and being that advisory and being able to step back, which is refreshing.
Thank you.
And Becky.
I'm curious, you said several times, we need to do what the community wants. What's your idea about how we figure that out, what the community wants?
Well, there's so many different ways to inquire about what the community wants from, and I don't think it's one way. I think that often this town utilizes, I've seen in the past years that they'll evaluate with an electronic survey. And then electronic survey comes in and it's got like six hundred, eight hundred people. And someone says, well, that's not a sure sample of what the community wants, so let's toss it out. So, why bother doing that at all? You know, so there's so many different ways you can do it. You can do public forums, but everyone's so busy and people don't show up. I think that the true and one way to actually do it, if it's something of a larger nature, would be an advisor ballot ultimately, at the end of the day. But I think that there is some work that you can, you know, you can do that survey, you can do the public forums and you can put that work in to at least narrow it down a bit. And I think that there has to be a study on what is the value of this to the community now? What do they feel their value is to that property? What is it actually worth in regards to the opportunity of building revenue or decreasing operating and capital expenses? Because I could tell you, if you were to tell me, Marlena, do you value, I don't know, do you value the library? I do value the library, very much so. Now, if you gave me a spreadsheet that said, well, it's costing me this amount of dollars in capital expenses every year, this amount of dollars in operating expenses every year, do I now value it? I probably would tell you yes. But then there might be another property that I tell you now. But I think that education needs to happen as well.
So, I'll just share some thoughts. I'm torn. Marlena, you're in a slightly different category than most of the other people because you're on the school committee and I think we all know that the largest capital expense that we are going to be facing in the next few years is a school. And so, I see this committee as needing to represent the entire town and maybe not even needing to be involved in the school project. I mean, that's something we have to do. The state makes a lot of the rules. We have a very highly-functioning school committee. So, even though, yes, that will be a major capital expense, I see the focus of this committee being on the rest of our capital investment and all the things that we own that we don't all even know what they are. So, and I, and I think this committee needs to be without any perceived bias. And I am a little bit concerned that if we put you on, it would indicate some or that there would be some belief that that wasn't necessarily the best way to get an unbiased committee. So, just putting that out there.
Well, I appreciate that opinion. I live in this town as an individual taxpayer. I have a child that enjoys many different assets in this town. I have a mom that lives in town who is a senior, eighty-three. I carry many hats. I don't think that just because I'm on the school committee, it would create a bias, especially since this is not about school property. This is about town property. At least, that's the way that I perceive the charge to be. Which means my opinion is strictly and certainly regarding the town. So, I can separate things quite departmentally, easily for me. And I think I've actually proven that in many different ways of serving the town in various different ways.
Thank you.
Well, I've seen you in action and know that you do your homework and you always come prepared for whatever task may come before you. And I'm going to have to give some strong thought and consideration because what you bring to the table is a tremendous amount of knowledge base behind it or has a tremendous amount of knowledge base behind it. But I do share a certain amount of what Becky's concerned. And not necessarily to the level that she may hold it to. I want to see you doing the job that you're doing on the school committee because I think it's operating very, very well. At the same token, it would be a shame not to take advantage of some of the background that you have. So, after we hear from the other candidates, I will have a tough decision to make when I make my vote. But I do thank you for volunteering and coming in tonight.
Thank you. And Adam?
I think we're all set. Next person we have is Scott Haggerty.
Good evening.
So, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on this committee?
Sure. Totally new to this. I run a marine construction company out of Boston.
I'm sorry, what kind?
A marine construction company. Work in heavy construction. Worked in Boston for ten years, worked in New York for ten years. Well, not quite ten, but since two thousand. So, I came here with the impression that the help that I would bring is evaluating capital assets. I run two properties on the waterfront in East Boston. I've done fifty-five million dollars' worth of public contracts in the last ten years in Massachusetts. So, I have a fair amount of experience in evaluating capital assets. However, I am new to this. I'm not sure what the expectations are here, but I can bring a lot of evaluation into the process.
And what's your background outside of business? Do you have any financial background in terms of training?
I'm the general manager of the company. I do my reporting to the, I'm sorry?
But in terms of number crunching or anything, you understand spreadsheets? You understand cost-based analysis?
I do all the estimating, all the accounting, all the project management.
I understand.
I project manage a fifteen-million-dollar project that I report back to our New York office. And that's my job. So, I don't have anything overly exciting to say about the process. I'm more interested in helping the town achieve its goals. I have four children in the school system here. This was my opportunity to give back. The opportunity was mentioned to me and I said, this sounds like something that's right up my alley that I can offer a significant amount of expertise in. And that's basically why I came to the table.
And if you are appointed to the committee, again, what do you think the number-one activity that you'll need to do to get it going?
I think the evaluation of the bid process and the evaluation of what the, what the projects moving forward would be is my expertise. I've dealt so much with many municipalities in Massachusetts over the years. And I think that that's where my biggest interest came in, was basically seeing how the town carries out its contracts and making sure that they're carried out in a way that's fair to both sides of the table. The town getting the right project managers, getting the right engineers, getting the right contractors. And that's kind of where I saw this. As for the actual familiarity with the town and our buildings, I've only been here ten years and I don't have a lot of familiarity with the buildings and what the capital assets are. I do know the conditions of things that my children are involved in, things of that nature that, you know, where we'd all like to see improvement. But overall, I think I wanted to just kind of throw my hat in the ring.
Fair enough. Thank you. Becky, let's start with you.
So, back to the conflict question and maybe particularly thinking about the fact that anything that we're building in this town is paid for by tax dollars. And so, if we have a couple of different projects wanting to move into the construction phase, but we can't afford all of them, I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts about how you manage differences of opinion and conflict.
I think you have to evaluate them from a fiscal standpoint initially. I don't see any reason for conflict if you're trying to make something happen with a certain amount of money you have and money you don't have. So, when it comes down to it, you've got a committee for that reason. You're going to know my opinion, but the reason the committee's there is to come to an agreement on what makes the most sense. So, I don't, like I said, I don't see that as a major issue. Simply because that's why you're assembling more than two people.
Delisa? Thank you. John Rower?
How could, how do you see yourself becoming familiar with the buildings, the assets in town? And what kind of philosophy, I'll use the word again, to prioritize the maintenance and upkeep? And also, do you have any experience with, do you do all new construction or?
Yeah, admittedly, I'm not a great public speaker here. Can feel my nerves a little bit since I've been up here. My expertise is in heavy construction, big contracts. I've got a contract I can bring in for you that thick from Mass DOT. But we do new construction, we do demolition, we do all of that. I manage two facilities, buildings, as Marlena said, boilers, you know, everything from soup to nuts, electrical contractors, everything. So, we do a lot of subcontracting out, a lot of familiarity writing subcontracts, those kinds of things. So, from a facilities maintenance standpoint, I'd like to see what you have. I mean, whatever information you're going to throw, I'm going to understand what you're giving me. But again, it sounds like we're talking more fiscally about these projects. So, we're going to have to take a lot of information at one time and say, okay, well, what is this building doing? And that's what I'm not completely understanding about what you're going to give us for information to evaluate. So, that would be helpful.
Actually, that's one of the things you're going to have to work with the town manager and the facilities is you're going to have to assemble a list of what are the assets that we have. And that's part of the task of this committee. Not that we don't know what we own, but it's putting it all together in one database, evaluating what the asset is and what's the condition of the asset overall.
Fair enough.
If that helps.
That does help.
John Geiger.
Much of the involvement that you'll find will kind of focus around what it is that we need to look at in this category of capital activities. The problems that we wrestle with today is surprises. All of a sudden, it's budget time and somebody comes out of the woodwork with a five-million-dollar project that we had no lead time for at all. And if it's a really bad day, you know, the bridge is going to fall down if we don't spend the money in the next year kind of approach. So, interacting with all the departments and groups and committees and boards in the town is an important activity in order to get their, them into a model of feeding you with their needs out into the future. And then there's the process of scoping those and trying to get a feel for these estimates, these cost estimates that things start at. And then when you get down to the actual procurement, you get the bids and so forth, oh, well, sometimes there's gaps, you know, gaps there. So, we want to do better at the estimating.
That's kind of my expertise, is estimating and having a really good feel for numbers on a lot of different variations of projects.
And then we have to prioritize. We look for this advisory committee to prioritize so that we're, you know, we're not putting the leaking roof way out behind, you know, a new golf course or something. No more golf courses, please. And that's really where I, where you, it's sort of the sphere as well as I can describe it that will be the core of what you work on. How do you feel about that? Because it's a little different from what you do every day, but it's certainly related.
I have an unlimited construction supervisor license. I can go look at a problem at the golf course, let's say, or I can go look at a problem at the DPW facility or I go look, I can look at those things on my free time and see what they're really talking about. That's kind of what you need to do. You've got to go see the problem. And they're going to say, dude, we've been waiting for three years to fix this. And over here, we've been waiting for this long to fix this. That's what this is about, it sounds like. So, you have to go out and engage these people and you have to go out and see the problem. It can't just be hearsay, it can't just be talking about it. You have to go out and see it. And I'd love to see more of the town's facilities and things they need. But, I mean, it's just another fiscal issue that, okay, well, does this have any life left in it? And understanding that. I love carpentry, I do a lot of my own, a woodworker. I understand construction, I understand facilities, I understand mechanics. More of an engineering mind. And I think that going out and dealing with those things directly is what has to happen.
So, you feel comfortable in this realm that I've tried to put a little bit of a corral around?
I mean, other than this scenario, I'm normally running the meetings.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that we failed to discuss and we've really focused on buildings and certainly getting a handle around what we own as municipal buildings and what the conditions and what the needs are is one thing, but it's way more than buildings. It's playing fields, it's golf courses. Do we really need a new fire engine right now just because it's being called for? Do we really need to replace two police cars every year just because it's there? That dump truck that the DPW needs, is it, can it go another year or not? And really starting to manage the priorities across the board of what it is. And really starting to manage the priorities across the board of what it is. So when the town manager develops his capital plan moving forward and whatnot, that, not that it hasn't worked, but there are always other types of lenses to look at a situation. And I negated to really discuss that with the previous folks that spoke, and that is an important component of this as well. So I think you get, and I think you agree with it.
I do. I think to echo Marlena a little bit on the outreach. You know, I can only reach out, I have four kids in the school system. So I got four different levels of parents. I got new ones I'm gonna start meeting because of my youngest, things like that. That's gonna be my limited outreach, is those families, those friends, those people, hearing from them. And then now I'd rather get involved with the DPW director, people like that, meeting them. I actually met the DPW director years ago on a playground. But reaching out to those people and finding out their real needs too. And it just sounds like a fun process to me, actually, to get more engaged in the town.
Great.
Can I just ask, because John didn't ask the time question? Do you have, you have four kids. It sounds like you have a busy life already.
It's all local sports, you know. But basically, I can fill some of my day in my office on my free time a little bit as well through all these certain things. But I think this being so local will be comforting. I drive to East Boston every morning. I leave here at 4:50 in the morning and I leave Boston now around 2:00, 2:30. This is being recorded, isn't it? And I come home from Boston and I, you know, I like being in Groton.
Okay.
Great. Well, we thank you for putting your name forward and we'll see where we are in a few minutes. Thank you. Is Peter Staff on here? As you said, I can't remember who wasn't. So hi, Peter.
The next two, Josh, skip down to David after Peter.
Well, I'm gonna call their names one more time.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, Honorable Members of the Board. My name is Peter Staff, lifelong member here in Groton. Some of you may know me. So I would try and, you know, hope to die here in Groton. This is my town. And I'm here to try and help the people, the town of Groton, and hopefully I can contribute something like I have before in the past.
And what's your background basically?
My background is I'm a master mechanic, facilities maintenance, infrastructure. You know, I've been doing it since I graduated high school here in Groton in eighty-five. And, you know, I continue to do it and continue to learn. Things have changed. And, you know, this town's changed immensely from when I grew up here, from where Five and Dimes to penny candy stores to the old dump. I've seen it all. I'm a hands-on person. And I believe, you know, we're talking about Florence Roach School, still has the same tile that was on the ground when I went to school there back in my fourth grade. But I'm a hands-on person. Town, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff happen after my many years on the fire department here in volunteering. But I've seen a lot of stuff go by and us trading a dump truck that still had a great motor and transmission. And it's on the lot the next day for twice as what we got for a trade-in value on it. And I'm the type of person that's gonna go down there. If they ask for a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for a new dump truck, I'm gonna put the thing up on a jack and start shaking the thing around because that's my expertise. And say, "Okay, what's really wrong with this? Can we get it refurbished for twenty-five thousand? Do we really need this?" You know, this is what we do. And, you know, in the nineties or in the, I should say eighties, late eighties, early nineties, the Board of Three, it would come down and be, "Okay, this is what we have for money. This is coming in this year. You departments have to, you know, do deal with them." I've seen in the two thousands on, this, you know, people go, "Well, I want. This town has it. I want this." Or, "This town has a better school. I want this." There's always different ways of doing things or compromises. And everything will come out the same, you know, to a, you know, how do you say? You know, an agreeable situation where everybody's satisfied, meets the needs of the town. And I've seen a lot of shortcomings too. Some people get something, but they only look in ten years in the front of the future. Like our buildings, our infrastructure, we should be looking fifty years. Because when I graduated in eighty-five, there was thirty-five, forty-five hundred people here. We're eleven thousand people now. We didn't plan for this. But then again, we didn't look forward to this. So, I mean, you have to have a, you have to have a certain foreshadowing to how we're gonna deal with things. I mean, there's a lot to digest, but I'm a hands-on person. And that's what you need to do. And you need to ask the tough questions. Do you need this? You know, or, you know, is this just some, you know, how often are you gonna use it? Can we rent it or lease it? And, you know, make out, you know, instead of spending a hundred thousand, can we lease a piece of equipment for ten thousand dollars for the month? And get the jobs done you need, you know, a good, just like the, I don't know what happened with the library, but that was just redone a few years ago. How come it didn't have a rubber roof on it that would last fifty years? It's only how much more money in the overcost of the whole project. We shouldn't be touching that thing at this point after that whole major renovation. So you have to look at the fine print, you know. I helped, I know how the town committees interact, having been on the fire department for so many years. And I know how to do the bids. And I remember us getting in trouble a bunch of times writing bids. And we said, "Oh, shall only be." Well, under Mass laws, of course, whoops, you're rigging the bid. And we got in a lot of trouble on a few things. Yeah, we're gonna sue the town. Oh geez, here we go. So, you know, I've been around. I've seen a lot. And my concern is, you know, I wanna see this be a better town and want it to grow and grow successfully and not outrageously. But I mean, you know, if somebody came up and asked me, "Oh, we need to replace twelve-inch mains." Well, geez, those mains aren't that old. You know, so you have to, you have to understand some of the infrastructure of what our town has at the same time. And that's where I'd be a good fit. And I mean, I just, I know the town. I've seen it evolve. And I think with a lot of stuff, you know, fire department's gonna ask for a new truck, I'll go down and look at it. I probably worked on it. And some of the people here who knew me, used to see them in my driveway every weekend getting fixed. This stuff never went out unless it was for brakes or something. I mean, I remember this building here as a kid. This is Saturday, Saturday afternoon was movie day here. So it was kind of neat. Get up on the balcony and watch a movie, be the Groucho's or something like that. But I think, you know, like I said, I expect the committee, if we've got something coming up, that everybody gets involved and goes looks at the problem. And everybody's expertise be combined and go, "Do you agree? Do you agree?" You know, "Do we need, do we need a new HVA system for how much money? Or do we need to duck work or?" You know, I think everybody in the committee has to take a hands-on approach and just not say, "Okay, well..."
We have to start with an inventory then.
Yeah, that's true too. But I mean, I've seen a lot of buildings here. And a lot of it may be surplus. Does the town really need it?
And that's something we'll evaluate, no doubt.
I mean, everything, every time you come into a job, every day's an evaluation. You know, you have to go home at the end of the day and say, "Did I make the right choice or are we, did we over, did we miss something?" So I mean, that's kind of the way you have to look at the job. And we have a lot of, and we have a lot of assets and we have a lot of stuff.
We have a lot of assets and we need that list put together. So let's start with John Geiger, see if he has any questions for you.
This is, this job that we're talking about, this role, is not heavily hands-on.
Oh, I understand, but...
In the sense that it's really looking around, looking forward, understanding some of the things we've done in the past. And working with people to get their needs evaluated so that the committee is able to make prioritized recommendations to the board.
And this is, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Geiger. The thing is, I know how many times this board's been come up by a department head and it says, "Oh, well, we need this." And you guys are, "Well, okay, you know, here we are." I mean, I think that's part of the, you know, committee, you're asking, you know, anything over thirty thousand dollars, you know, is it justified? And, you know, we have to look at, like you said, like John said, the assets. You know, is it a one-time use? Is it just gonna be used once a year? I mean, this is what we're supposed to recommend for you to, you know, is it a good, you know, do we see that it's a, you know, applicable and, you know, a sound judgment for the taxpayers and this board feel confident in? And I believe that's, you know, what everybody here wants to, you know, feel comfortable about is, "Hey, we made the right decision at the end of the day." And I understand that it's not a hands-on job, but when somebody's gonna ask me for something, having the skills, I'll go down and take a look for it myself and say, and ask the department manager, "Do we really need this? Can we get away with fifteen thousand dollars and do a refurb?" You know, that's, you know, that's an honest question to ask a department head. And that's just good business. You know, the funny thing is towns work differently than private. And private, if privates ran the same way as a town, they'd be out of business. You know, and that's kind of a tough way to put it, but, you know...
Okay, but I think I know where you're coming from.
Okay. I think, thank you for your question though.
Thanks.
Delisa, John?
Yeah.
How about you, John?
Are you still working, still?
I'm semi-retired right now, sir. I've been kind of dealing with a couple of estates and, you know, but I have, I have time. I have a daughter here in the school system. I've lived at the same residence on Lawrence Pond Road all my life. And, you know, like I said, I'm a born in blood here, so...
So it sounds to me like you've got the equipment part down, the mechanical part down, building experience and building construction?
Well, yeah, I did, I usually did for, you know, as part of my jobs in bigger companies and whatever. I always did the facilities maintenance and the infrastructure upgrades. So that would be anything from compressed airs to HVACs if needed. Or, you know, it's a wide, wide variety of things, you know. I mean, just like any building has a different function. You know, so it's, I also did commercial construction for a little bit with a company, but I've always been involved with it. I can read blueprints and schematics. So, you know, we've always used to come across the desk. And, I mean, I've done a lot of technical stuff too, but I don't feel like going into, you know, saying the stuff on the Mars lander or an AWACS plane or something I built and tested. It doesn't.
Were you in the military?
Yes, I was. I was in the reserves from one of eighty-four to, to one of ninety.
AWACS, it's just...
Well, I have stuff that I can't talk.
All right, thanks. Becky?
So how about your skills at dealing with conflict?
Customers? Customers are always number one.
No, I said, skills at dealing with conflict or disagreement?
Okay, conflict, like I said, I was on the fire department here for many years, so I know how it goes back and forth. But you have to try and come to a, you know, the worst you can do is just keep elevating tensions and going up. You know, you have to find a way to make everything work, you know, whether through concessions or through, you know, mutual agreements. But I mean, it's, you know, I've learned over the years in business that if you just get in the same place, you can just spin around in the circle. The thing is, you go away mad, you're still gonna be in the same place you were, you know, at the, you know, when you began. So what did you accomplish? Nothing. And that's just a waste of time. And I don't have time to waste, you know, with that stuff, especially when you're under a deadline. So you have to make agreements or, you know, try and work. And being a chameleon with a bunch of different department heads and, you know, knowing their personalities and how they're gonna come across is, it's kind of an interesting trait you need to have in business.
Okay, thanks.
No, I've certainly heard your background and I like your equipment background experience. And certainly buildings are a whole different thing, so I wanna hear from everybody else and we'll try and come to an answer conclusion. But certainly want to thank you for putting your name forward.
Oh, yes. Well, like I said, it's time to get back into helping the town of Groton again.
Thanks. Next, we have William Swett. Is he here? Okay, moving on, Robert Lockett. Is he here? David Menugian, you are here. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is David Menugian and I don't have the facilities experience that many of the other people have. I come from a slightly different background. I've lived in Groton on and off since the mid-seventies. And I am a professional civil engineer. So the first half of my career was doing design and construction of horizontal construction. So roads, water, sewer lines, those types of things. I then went to the public sector where I was a town engineer for a few years, a town planner. And then for the last seven years, I've been a public works director where I manage a system of a grounds, a parks and cemetery, a water system, a sewer system, vehicle fleet for a municipality and an engineering design group as well. So my experience on committee work is at the regional level, I worked with the MRPC, their Joint Transportation Committee. And as part of that, I got involved in Fitch's Bridge. I was the chair of the Fitch's Bridge Committee where we worked very closely ultimately with the town manager to come up with a funding plan for that. And as you know, it was successfully built. So that's a piece of infrastructure that's out there. My local work started in the mid-nineties. I was on the space needs committee for the library expansion at that time. And I've also served on the Greenway Committee. And then for about the last five years, I've been on the finance committee. And then this particularly interested me. I've worked with two capital planning advisory committees for two different towns that I've worked for. So I've been on the municipal side presenting to those committees. So I have that experience as well. Thank you.
And I know, I'm not gonna ask you the question I asked everybody else because I know you believe that we do need the inventory of all of our assets. But what do you see your role if you were to be appointed to this committee? Would it be in conflict with or would it enhance your role as a FatfinCon member?
So I think there's been a fair amount of discussion on that subject, how we define the roles of the select board, the finance committee and capital planning advisory. At one level, I see the finance committee as determining budgets, working with the select board and the town manager. Capital planning advisory, looking at the projects, looking at the funds we have and perhaps prioritizing those projects. And so defining that role, I think, is gonna be part of discussion over the first year as well.
Good answer. Becky?
So I'll ask you about handling differences of opinion and conflict.
So that's a great question. I think the board, as I look at this, did not ask for five experienced individuals to come give you their independent opinions on things. They asked for a committee. And as such, we want to get a wide variety of opinions and talk to a number of different groups. And try as best we can to come to a consensus, perhaps with somebody said, but get there. And so creating an environment where we encourage a variety of opinions and then ultimately work towards some kind of common goal. Such that when we provide a recommendation to the board, the board says, "Okay, well, here are five people with a variety of experience who are knowledgeable in a number of different areas, who saw that there were a wide array of interests with limited funds. And this is how they compromise. So we should take this information and consider it as we move forward."
Okay, thanks.
John?
In your experience as a DPW director, you're still doing that?
I am, yeah.
For what town?
Bedford.
Have you, have you had to run across what we're trying to accomplish here by establishing this committee? Have they got anything similar? Have you seen anything similar? And you must have to do with buildings in town yourself.
Yes, so we just finished our planning process with the capital planning advisory committee in Bedford. And so we do a six-year plan where the different departments come in and present to this committee. So my department over six years has about ninety-five projects, just under fifty million dollars of value. And so what we do is we present those and the committee asks a lot of questions, a lot of what these folks mentioned tonight, you know, those types of questions. But I think a piece of it is the overall planning. How does it meet the town's goals? You know, we have a master plan, a comprehensive plan. We have a wide array of different groups in town. We have housing. We have open space and recreation. How does it meet all the goals of all the planning documents we have in town as well?
How did you think that went from your perspective as a department head?
So I think from this year in Bedford, we changed the process quite a bit. So, I think from this year in Bedford, we changed the process quite a bit. As a number of people mentioned, when we present before the committee, it's a wonderful opportunity for people to ask deep questions, and we have some great experience here. Well, did you really look at this? And it gives us an opportunity to say, well, these are questions that other folks are going to be asking, too. We really need to figure out what the answer to that is and get information to people. So I think some of that is important as well. At the same time, we want to make sure we have a process that can get through all the different projects and stay aligned with the planning and the budget process for select board and finance committee as well.
Okay, thanks.
And Mr. Geiger?
You're a busy guy. You, you think you have the cycles and the time to add another one to your, your list?
Yes, I'm very excited about this type of work. It's something that I've worked on for a long time, and so when the town mentioned that they were interested in doing it, I think it's fantastic, so I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm all set, and I want to thank you for your current service on committees and for putting your name forward on this.
Thank you.
And finally, our last candidate is Michael O'Rourke.
Good evening.
Good evening to you, sir. So would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I'm an 18-year resident of Groton. So we moved in here and raised two sons, one who's graduated from high school, he's a senior, and will be moving on with him at the end of the year, hopefully. And I've managed to successfully escape and not be too involved in town government activities for that period of time, aside from voting and participating. You probably seen me here with scouts. So I've been active as baseball coach, soccer coach, lots of scouting, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, the Fire Department Explorer post, and things like that. But I had absolutely been looking around for some other ways to involve myself with that now that I've got older children, so I've got a little more time to do things like that. And this was just happenstance that I saw the posting on and decided I'd come down and try to pull it. Now, I expected there'd be a lot of people that had experience in facilities management and things like that, which I don't. I'm a high-tech startup employee. I start up technical support groups and customer service groups for companies, and have managed to be acquired five times, and I'm starting again with that. So I work for a small startup in Boston in cloud storage, and so I've got experience managing moving labs and things like that, but not major facilities. So my expectation is that as part of this committee, to kind of round out the experience and not have the same experience as everybody else, but just be able to manage based on what you tattoo and not necessarily having been prepared for it.
Okay. Let's start with you, John. Geiger, this time.
Are you a process person? Do you, do you look at things and look at processes and?
The answer is yes, but at a small company, it's important to be able to respond to things. Process comes later, so, so you want to make sure that process doesn't get in the way of achievement. So you want to look and find out what you do and how you do it, and is there a process that you can apply to make it more efficient, but not create a process and then have everything conform to that just because you've invented a process?
Okay, that, that's good here. Process engineering causes you to go look at a process and figure out how you, how it might be, you might be able to make it better. As this committee evolves, there is a, there will be a process, and we want to have a process that's simple, straightforward, but highly effective. And I'm trying to get a feel for, you know, how you'd feel about being involved in that aspect.
It's, it's, it's part of what I've done along the way with companies as you're starting off small and evaluating a process, and does this part fit? What do you keep as you grow and move forward? What has been efficient? What needs to change to be, remain efficient? And how do you make that decision on, on what you keep and what you remove and what you evolve into?
Great, thank you.
John?
In part of the processes that you've used, in any, anything on the building construction, building maintenance, equipment, you know, I'm glad you would mention the other things because we would heavily involve the buildings, but any, any other experience in any of those?
The only relevant would be, as moving a high-tech lab from building to building, as we grew and moved to take the facilities, make sure your HVAC covers the lab needs, plan for growth of your lab, and things like that, but not an entire building, so.
All set?
Thanks.
And Becky?
So, do you deal with budgets?
Yes.
And sort of financial forecasting, predicting?
Yes. At a startup, everything is about how much money do you have and how much money do you need to get then for each step in each phase? So making sure that you don't spend money you don't have and that you've got a plan.
That would be a really good thing on this committee, to make sure you don't spend money you don't have. And your experience with conflict and disagreement?
I, as I mentioned, customer support and technical support. So there's, there's a good deal of that externally, dealing with, with that. So I've, I've managed to develop skills, listening skills, repeating, make sure you understand what the conflict is, what's the nature of the conflict, and then helping to, to navigate to really find a solution that's palatable to everybody. And sometimes that's the best you get is palatable.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just taking a couple minutes here. I think you bring something different than everybody else to this table. I'm trying to process it in terms of how that fits into this committee, because this committee really needs to look at the capital assets of real estate and the capital assets of equipment and as well as every other aspect of things that this town owns. And I'm just wondering how you see your fit as you started out on this committee? Obviously, you're putting your name forward and your expertise, and I don't question that, but what do you think that you'd be able to bring in addition?
Just thinking about, the luxury of going last as you get to the questions. So, so I think one of the things that I thought of is balance. So I'm mostly, my qualifications are being a resident of the town, so I think I have a background of what does, what do the townspeople feel is important? And being able to balance the needs of the town and how people feel about that, I think that's something that I can offer here, that maybe other people are too focused on the, the process or the nature of that and kind of lose sight of some of those things.
Fair enough. All right, as I said to everybody else, thank you for putting your name forward for consideration and wanting to help the town of Groton, and now we are all tasked with appointing five of you to this committee. So the way this process works is, obviously, you certainly can include the two individuals who didn't show up tonight, but it's personally my belief that if you wanted to be on this committee and you put your name forward, and you couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, that you would send us a note saying, I cannot be here tonight, but still consider me for this committee. So the names are on the ballot for those individuals, and we need to select five of them. So each one of us should mark five names on this list.
I just wanted to check with Mark.
Yes.
About that they all were notified.
Yes.
And we didn't hear anything from either of those two people?
And keep in mind, they, they had applied to the original microcommittee. We reached out to everybody and asked if they were still interested. We heard back from everybody, and I included, we heard back from everybody that's here, obviously, and I included everybody's name just in case they were still interested, and we sent them out another invitation for tonight as well.
Okay, thank you.
Becky?
So we just marked five?
Mark five names, give it to me and I'll tally.
We don't put them in order. We don't rank order?
Nope. Just check five names and hand me your ballot, please. And then we'll discuss it publicly, obviously, to comply with the open meeting law.
When you're ready, come here and I'll pick it up.
Whatever's easier. Now the music plays. Oh, sorry, John, I apologize.
Spelled my name wrong.
I'm an idiot.
You may ask a question.
I'd like to hear from our town manager, Mark.
Yes.
What his feelings are about this committee, because the committee will obviously need to work very closely with Mark, who is doing a lot of this work now.
Okay, look, I, I agree, and let's afford him the opportunity. Let him tally the ballots here.
Okay.
Okay, and before he reads your names, give him a chance to comment on that.
I think it's a good question. Yeah, listen. I work with Josh and the committee on putting this together. By charter, my responsibility is to put together the capital plan for the finance committee and the select board, and getting more citizen input, I think, will be very helpful to the process. I look forward to working with the committee.
Okay, thank you.
As usual, what happens is we have one, two, three, four people who receive four votes and two people who receive two votes. So the last spot, we're going to have to do a second round. But Stephen Lane received four votes, Don Kosky received four votes, Scott Haggerty received four votes, and David Minugian received four votes. Marlena Gilbert and Michael O'Rourke received two votes each. So I'll tell you who voted how so that we can put it in the public record. Josh Deegan voted for Stephen Lane, Don Kosky, Scott Haggerty, David Minugian, and Michael O'Rourke. John Riley, spelled R-E-I-L.
L.
L-Y. Voted for Stephen Lane, Don Kosky, Marlena Gilbert, Scott Haggerty, and David Minugian. John Geiger voted for Stephen Lane, Don Kosky, Marlena Gilbert, Scott Haggerty, David Minugian. Becky Pine voted for Stephen Lane, Don Kosky, Scott Haggerty, David Minugian, and Michael O'Rourke. So Mr. Lane, Mr. Kosky, Mr. Haggerty, and Mr. Minugian are appointed to the committee with four votes each, and the board needs to decide between Marlena Gilbert and Michael O'Rourke for the fifth spot. I don't know how you want to go about doing that. Somebody can make a motion, you can talk about it, you can figure it out.
Well, I'd like to talk about it. I was really torn about appointing both David and Marlena, to be honest with you, to this committee, in so much as I'd like to see some new faces that haven't served on major committees before. And after hearing and knowing about David's background with the DPW in Bedford, I thought that over Marlena, that had a little bit more strength than that. And therefore, that's what weighted my decision between the two of them. And concerning the other members who put their names forward, I voted who I felt was in the best interests of serving on this committee, because we have talked about this for about three years in various renditions, and it's time to get this thing going. So that's my position on that.
So the choices between Marlena and Michael?
You're supposed to explain your, your other votes, I thought.
You, you can, but you don't have to. I, I've announced publicly how you voted. If you choose to discuss why, you absolutely can, but there's no, there's no requirement. Your vote is your vote.
So at this point, then, concerning, thank you for bringing me back on point, that I thought about what Mr. O'Rourke said, and I think that bringing a different perspective that somebody who understands a different level of work, other than what everybody else's backgrounds are, to me, was a unique perspective. And it might drive people home to, hey, you got to see the forest or the trees and not just evaluate it and look at a process maybe a little bit differently. So I thought that that was a little bit different. But again, I could go either way with either of the two of them, and if the board was to make a motion one way or the other, I would support it one way or the other, to be honest with you.
So, again, I think both of those two candidates are extremely well-qualified. I have periodically, when we've had decisions to make about appointing people, I'm really wanting to bring new people into government, and so that was the, one of the things that swayed my vote in favor of Mr. O'Rourke. You know, if, if this was a larger committee, we could have them both on, but I guess that I would still favor Mr. O'Rourke.
I, I voted for Ms. Gilbert. I know Mr. O'Rourke, and he would do a fine job there, too, unlike what you just said about it's, it's being new. I could see her, the reason I went with her, because of her experience, because of the school buildings, and I could, I, I didn't see the connection between the, I could see her separating the school from the town, so I, my vote was for her. But again, like Josh, I'll do whatever's in the best interest of the board, however we go. Everybody was incredible candidates and should be highly commended for coming out for, this is not, it's not going to be a, a, a committee where there's not going to be a lot of work. It's going to be a lot of work, and it's really important, so I appreciate everyone that was there, and I wish we could have all of them on it.
Marlena?
I agree with new names to new committees, and I rescind my application.
You made it very easy for the board. Thank you, Marlena. It was very gracious of you to do that.
That's very generous of you.
Okay, so the next step for the board now is to determine terms. I know Mr. Lane was very clear that he wanted the one-year term, but there are...
So, so let's make this easy if we can. Is there anybody else who was being appointed to the committee that would object to either the two or the three-year term? Can you all accept that, other than Mr. Lane?
Keep in mind, the renewal term, if you choose to stay on, will be for three years. It's just we have to stagger the first.
Anyone, I prefer the two.
Anyone else prefer the two? Because we can make this really easy. No one? All right. Someone want to make a motion to the effect that we appoint Stephen Lane to the one-year term? The three-year terms would go to Mr. Minugian. Why doesn't somebody else make the motion? I'm cheering, I forgot.
All right, I, I may, I move that we appoint Steve Lane to the one-year term, Scott Haggerty to a two-year term, and Don Kosky to a two-year term, and Michael O'Rourke and David Minugian to three-year terms on the capital planning advisory committee.
Someone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Members of the public? Board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. You need to make sure that the town clerk sways you folks in. The town manager will work in conjunction with you to set a meeting time and for the kickoff meeting. If you have an issue with the charge, as written, because we've been back and forth on this one, but the first thing you need to do is discuss the charge. If you got a problem with it, come back with a proposed change that we can run by the finance committee and the select board, and let's resolve that issue right out of the gate.
And I just want to emphasize, you must get sworn in by the town clerk.
Yes.
And there's a certain, I think you also have to do a conflict of interest. You have to read something.
Conflict of interest?
Training.
Open meeting law training?
I'll send you an email tomorrow soon, as I guess you said.
I'll send you an email tomorrow soon, as I guess you said, I'm in the system with instructions on who to see and what your requirements are.
Don't go to the town clerk's office until you hear from Don, because he'll say, I don't have an appointment letter, and send you away.
This is a very important committee, and we look forward to, you know, having you folks weigh in and working with the town manager.
Thank you.
FinCon and our board, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
David?
How Andrew will get you open for first meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'll set up, David, I'll be up, yes. I have all your contact information. Thanks, everybody.
Connie Sartini, you have a question?
Yes, I'd like to know what the qualities of the first capital planning committee are for this.
Of course, yes, this is an appointed committee. Yes. Every meeting will be posted, every meeting will have minutes. I might suggest even for this committee that initially, because there's going to be so much data, if you can get them, somebody to take minutes for this committee?
Yeah, we have, we have a pool of people that we can ask.
This is a pretty important committee for that, and especially at the beginning, there's going to be so much data and information. All right, is that satisfying?
On that part, yes.
I'm glad that part satisfies you.
Mr. Chair, all you have left is minutes approval?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, we have three sets of minutes, I believe.
I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting of October 7th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we approve the minutes of the workshop meeting of October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we approve the minutes of the pre-town meeting, meeting, October 21st, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, liaison reports.
Excuse me?
Liaison reports.
I apologize.
My fault, I, I failed to do that.
Are there any board members that have a liaison report? Seeing none. Oh, you have one?
Yes, for the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Speak up.
The planning board is reviewing the findings of that committee on November 7th at a public meeting. So, we've finished our, we've provided the deliverables.
That's good, thank you. Anything from anyone else? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.